2024, we have a tardy start this evening at 7:21 PM. Clerk, will please call the roll.
Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Hayes.
President.
Trustee Perkins. Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Schelmoser.
Here.
Trustee Van Ryan.
Here.
President Richardson.
Yes, I'm here, thank you. Would you please all join me in the pledge of allegiance and rise and sing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the benefit of Rebecca's family, for the last 20 years, we have operated with a mission, a vision statement of an oasis of gracious countryside living. If you look at Route 14 from southeast to northwest, Palatine is a big suburb on our southeast, Crystal Lake is a big suburb on our northwest, they're both beautiful communities, I went to high school in Palatine. We're this wonderful little bucolic oasis, and we've worked really hard to maintain a countryside atmosphere. We want people, when they come home on Friday afternoons, to feel like they're going on vacation. I think Rebecca, you've got a tiny taste of this in the other room, you'll get a lot more of it as you assume the position. I recruited everybody up here to run, and so they're not only very capable and competent and intelligent and accomplished, they're all really nice people. So you're coming to work for some very nice people, and they've learned how to put a muzzle on me, just ask the treasurer and the administrator. And I've been married for 35 years, Rebecca, so I take direction from women extremely well. Just in case you have any issues, though, you can certainly tell me the truth. I think we welcomed you earlier, but if there's anything else you'd like to say in introducing your family or yourself, we would be thrilled to have you do so. Please, and hit the little red button, please.
Okay. Hi, I'm Rebecca, I'm thrilled to be here, and everyone has been so kind, so it's made it such a more soft landing into something that is so big and so meaningful to me, so I really appreciate this opportunity and the time that you've spent with me, consideration and all of that. I'm from Algen, I am now living in Bartlett, I have a dog, like I told you guys, so I'm so excited, you'll hear so much information about him, probably too much. But the people that are here are some of the most important people in my life, I have my boyfriend Tom, my dad Butch, and then I have my brother-in-law Brian and my sister-in-law Amanda, so I'm very excited that they could be here with me as well.
You're doing that job for a walk on these trails because
I sure will, yeah.
They are good for that purpose.
I sure will, thank you.
For your family's benefit, how many candidates did we have?
We had a total of 28 candidates, and we interviewed eight.
So she really distinguished herself very admirably to be number one out of 28. And we're all pretty accessible, so call us when we can help you in the job, we're here to empower the staff. And one thing I will never tolerate in this room is if people are abusive to the staff. People have a right to come in and yell at us, they don't have a right to come in and badger and belittle the staff, and you're in municipal government, and that's when I use this thing. I won't tolerate that kind of abuse. So we will look out for her here, and you look out for her every place else. Do we have a good deal on that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda. Agenda item four this evening is approval of the minutes from our meeting on December 5, 2023. Are there questions or comments or edits for the administrator on the draft minutes? If not, Chair would like a motion to approve Agenda Item 4, eight minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting, December 5, 2023, may I have a motion?
So moved.
But Trustee Schaller may always have a second.
Second.
By Trustee Schelmoser, thank you. Clerk, will please call the roll.
Trustee Schelmoser. Oh, sorry, Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Schelmoser.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, Chair asks unanimous consent that the record remain open for five business days for purposes of any necessary technical conforming amendments, without objection, so ordered. Agenda Item 5, President's Remarks, I've kind of given them already, so we can move to Agenda Item 6. This is the first opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board. I don't see anybody else here but any of you who would wish to say something, you're certainly welcome to do so. And if not, we'll move quickly to the consent agenda, we're gonna try to be out of here by nine o'clock, okay, and maybe sooner. It cuts down on my jokes. And it's really hard because they pressure me a lot, because they just love my stories and jokes. See, you're new, but I've only got 12 of them. Agenda Item 7, A, Consideration of a Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Statement of Work 0003, An Addendum to the Statement of Work 0003 with Chalmers Street Consulting Incorporated for Professional Services Relative to the Development of an Improved Building Permitting Process for the Village. We are working on a digitization of all village processes, and Trustee Van Ryan and I work for a company, I'm outside council, she's full-time, where I've learned, we've both learned a lot about this, and cities have been moving to this of all sizes, but we're really determined to become a national best practice role model on this, and we're making great progress. So this is pursuant to the budget we originally set for the third piece of work, there will be a fourth one coming forward, and as we discussed in the committee of the whole, it will be a not-to-exceed amount to finish the project. 7B, Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Lake Barrington Village Code, Section 2-3-6, Quote, "Classification of Licenses," Quote. You're to the administrator.
Thank you, President Richardson. This is an ordinance to reduce three liquor license classifications by one, it's for a former restaurant that had closed on December 30th, and this ordinance will also be retroactive to December 31st.
All right. And 7C, which is why you're here, Consideration of the Appointment of Rebecca Harrington for the position of Village Clerk and Executive Assistant. Do you want to do just a quick setup of what's written here?
Sure. The Village of Lake Barrington recently conducted a recruitment for a village clerk and executive assistant, a total of eight, I'm sorry, a total of 28 resumes were received, we interviewed eight candidates, and we were very impressed with Rebecca Harrington, we brought Rebecca back in for a second interview with Julia Powers, our building private administrator, and Julia felt as strongly as we did, and so we were recommending the appointment of a new village clerk.
Wonderful. We have great confidence you will not only be very capable in your duties, but this is kind of like Garrison Keillor, this is like Wobegon, and so we appreciate the attitude you're bringing along with the training and intelligence and academic accomplishment. Chair would love a motion. And I'll ask Trustee Hayes, since he's Chair of the Committee, to perhaps make the motion, and Trustee Burke as President pro tem to second, to approve Agenda Items A through C, including the appointment of Rebecca Harrington as the new village clerk in Lake Barrington. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
May I have that seconded, please?
Secented.
Thank you. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Schelmoser.
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. It's not always this much fun in this room, but tonight, and your brother-in-law knows. Well, that's the whole reason Lieutenant Kirk has to stay here with us. Agenda Item 8 is the Treasurer's Report, Mrs. Hirsch.
I think the microphone works this month.
It does. All right. Okay, so before you, we have the financial statements for seven months end of November 30th, 2023, so we're cranking along through our fiscal year. You'll see we have total assets at $3,461,000, liabilities are $471,000, and that makes our equity $2991,000. Revenue for the seven months is $3,313,000, expenses are $3,881,000, oh my gosh, $3,881, and our net loss are $567,000. So as we've done each month, we can pull out those regular, unregular items, the extraordinary items, to come up with a regular net income, net loss, and that is $595,000 for the seven months, the same seven months last year, we had revenue of $879,000. We've talked each month about some of the, what some of those differences are, that hasn't changed, it's just, you know, categories are up this year, from last year, engineering expenses up, other consultant is up, some legal is up, and payroll is up. And we flip forward to page 13 and 14, we can do the actual to budget review, and you'll see there as well that some of those items were budgeted, are over budget. So page, my page 13, which I'm not sure what your page number is, sorry, in your whole book, your packet's different. So you'll see that our revenues are 69% actual to budget. In fact, if I pull out ARPA, we have this ARPA revenue in there, and some of that was actually recognized last year early, we're at 73% actual to budget, so we've recognized revenue as expected to date. And then on page 14, expenditures are at 65% actual to budget. So there are some items there that are over budget already, and some items that we know will be over budget by year end. Computer consulting, legal, other consultants, we had some change in circumstances this year to raise those above budgeted amounts, we should be fine covering those, but there's no concern there. Move to Water Fuel Tax Fund, we have no activity in that fund for this year, we have $322,000 in net current assets, we'll keep growing that for this year and next year before we spend that on roads. And then page 19, we have the Water Sewer Fund, no unusual activity mentioned there this month, about $17,000 in current assets, so we're still growing that fund to cover larger sorting expenses in the future.
And Peggy, you make me think, just because you're talking about the Water and Sewer Fund, you can come back to it later, the water rate study, and I want to make sure I give you some help on that.
Okay, we have talked about that, and we're working on that, yeah, but thank you. Okay, so that's really all I have until I go to the warrants, any questions on the financial statements? Okay, I just have two items to mention on the warrants, this first one is on the Water Sewer Fund, and this is warrant A, and this is for $49,798, and that's for Waterwell Solutions, that's preventive maintenance on Row Number One, that was approved by the Board last September, the amount was lower, that was $38,774 was approved, the Village Administrator made a change order, which within her spending authority, she's able to execute, and so the total amount came to $49,798. And then on warrant B, there was just one request, and that's tape graphics, and that's $2,683.39, and that was for the winter newsletter. So actually, overall, it's a pretty quiet month, but happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Peggy, can I ask a question, stepping back to your page 14? I noticed the expense for the yard waste stickers is over budget. Do we think that's
Right, so that, we bought new yard waste stickers from TRS, and we also purchased them from Waste Management.
Got it.
And we are getting money back for those, but we're netting it against the bill.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So the ones that were returned, we were able to, that the residents returned to us, we'll net back against the bill.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, so, that's a good question.
Okay.
Any questions?
If there are no questions for the clerk, then, or excuse me, for the treasurer, pardon me, then Chair would like a motion to approve and block Agenda Items 8A through C. A, approve financial statements as of November 30, 2023. B, pay bills in the amount of $120,708.88 as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated January 2, 2024. And C, pay bills in the amount of $81,441.88 as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated January 2, 2024. May I have a motion to approve and block?
So moved.
Thank you. Trustee Hayes, may I have a second?
Second.
By Trustee Van Ryan, thank you both. Clerk, will please call the roll.
Trustee Hayes.
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Schelmoser.
Yes.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. Agenda Item 9, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have one item this evening. I know you mentioned the water rate study, RFP. I had mentioned this at the last board meeting, and then I included in one of my Friday reports for everybody that we hadn't received any responses for the water rate study, RFP. President Richardson and I talked last week about this, and I am going to work with our village attorney on the correct language, and we are going to put together a bidders' conference, and we are going to have that sometime probably towards the end of January or early February, so I wanted to update everyone on that.
I met with the staff from both the US Conference of Mayors and the National League of Cities when I was in Washington last month, and they're gonna try to, we need to send them whatever we want to send them, and they will help push it out to the corporate members they have that support them, that provide these services.
Great.
Okay, are there questions for the administrator? If not, there's no clerk's report tonight, so we can go to reports of the standing committees. 11A, Branding and Comms, Trustee Van Ryan.
Thank you, President Richardson. Just a couple things for me this evening, we've talked about it at past meetings, to see our newsletter come out and be published over the past couple of weeks and have that opening letter from all of us, I thought that was something for all of us to be very proud of, and we're just very pleased to see that come to fruition, so thank you to the trustee to my left for the initial idea, and to President Richardson and others for their input, but very proud moment to see that come to print. And then secondly, our LinkedIn page continues to gain steam, I was hoping to be here to say we broke the threshold of 170, we're one shy, 169 followers, so Rebecca, you and I
One shy.
We need one more to get us to that 170, it's grown by 10 followers over the past couple of months, so we've started following some other villages as well and commenting on posts there, so I'm hoping to gain more traction, but it's been a fun ride to see that grow. That's it.
Rebecca, for your benefit in particular, but your family, I think, may find it interesting, this is a short letter, but it was from the heart from all of us, and it's in the newsletter, but I'll read it, also for the benefit of the record that's being recorded. It always starts out with, "Dear Lake Barrington neighbor, the mayor's opening message of this newsletter typically focuses on the wonderful things happening in Lake Barrington, the peaceful, bucolic community we are all proud to call home. In this edition, the entire village board would like to share our collective views on a topic that is important to us and we believe to people in communities all around the world. We take immense pride in Lake Barrington being an oasis of gracious countryside living, but we cannot help but shudder over the crime, violence, and terror that is gripping so many other places, both at home and overseas. Today, we are shocked and repulsed by so many of the events overseas which are bringing misery and harm to innocent people, and closer to home, we are deeply unsettled by both the crime and lawlessness that seems to grip so many places around our country, as well as the frightening rise of prejudice, antisemitism, and bigotry, especially on some of our nation's college campuses. As we look to the future, we must all recommit ourselves to opposing prejudice, antisemitism, and bigotry in all its forms. We condemn violence, and we believe the spirit of the season we now celebrate should guide us all along a pathway that each of us can take in our daily lives to promote a better world. It is simply this, peace begins with us and how we treat one another. Small things can yield big results, and we all have a part to play. Lake Barrington is a beautiful place, not simply because of its exceptional physical environment, it is a beautiful place because of the people who live here, people who understand that violence and hate are never the solution, and that freedom, kindness, and respect are the keys to building lasting peace both at home and abroad. We extend our warmest wishes to all of Lake Barrington's residents and business owners for a very safe and happy holiday season, and we pray for peace in 2024." And I want to thank Trustee Hayes, who also provided some outstanding edits in getting to this final thing. I'm in my last term, so I get to say everything I want, and this was from the heart for all of us. There are things we will tolerate, yell at me because of the tax levy, but we will not condone antisemitism or other bigotry in this room. And then I will ask the deputy to remove someone who does, so. 11B, Economic Development, Trustee Burke.
Thank you, President Richardson, relatively short report tonight, I'm gonna focus on the retail center over on Northwest Highway, formerly Peterson Plaza, just because there's been a lot of activity over there, and also because I spent a bunch of time there right before Christmas, both at Damanico's Restaurant, Benta Vintage Rugs and Homewares, and DB Men's Wear. So I was shopping, dining, and other things over there prior to the holiday, and wanted to make a point to meet with all the business owners to get a feel for the business climate. Sadly, we learned that Damanico's is now closed as of the end of this year, but I did get a chance to talk with the two owners, the two proprietors, and despite, you know, they met, had a number of challenges that they were dealing with, but the good news is they are looking to sell the restaurant, as is, and are looking, working with their landlord to find someone, another restaurateur to take over, so we're gonna remain optimistic that, as sad as we are to be losing Damanico's, we're optimistic that maybe we'll find another restaurant operator that will view that as a great spot, with a completely new built-out kitchen and facilities, it's kind of almost moving ready, because they did so much, you know, work on that. I've spoken both with the landlord and the restaurant owners about making sure that the village has a seated table when any kind of discussions take place, because certainly the village has some incentives that we could offer a restaurateur if they wanted to buy that property with leasehold improvement, signage, or other things that we could do to help with some of their startup expenses, so we will keep everybody posted on that. Meanwhile, on a more positive note in that same retail center, Benta Vintage, as we know, Nicole was in here a couple meetings ago introducing herself to us, and she's open, and she has told me that business is exceeding her expectations, like she's delighted and amazed with her walk-in business. Formerly, she had an online vintage rug business, and I don't know, has anybody been in there at this dais? Have you been in there?
I was there at the
You were at the open, yep, they had their ribbon cutting and moving house, and you guys were there, but it's a beautiful store, and it has much more, I'm saying to everybody out there, it has much more than rugs, so it has a lot of really fascinating houseware items. Unbeknownst to me, my wife went in there and shopped it quite heavily, and came home telling me what a nice young woman Nicole was, I said, "Yeah, and she must really like you now, too," so. And so we wish her continued success, we're just delighted that she's having success. And then down the road a little bit, DB Men's Wear, he hosted a customer appreciation event at which I was able to pop into, and it was amazingly busy, and I ran into so many people that I know, it was quite interesting, like Old Homewake, and so these are all people who shop there and really love both the service and the merchandise in there, and he continues to say that his business is exceeding, his retail business is exceeding his expectations. So there's reasons to be optimistic about that site, and we just need to get, we don't want that restaurant location to sit fallow any longer than it has to, because we don't want that to drag anybody else down. So we're gonna make that, I'm gonna be personally making that a priority, to see that we can get that moving as quickly as possible and have a robust, because both Benta and DB benefit from that, because they get walk-in business, people who go in and see that. Like, the night that I was going there recently, there was a couple walking in to Damanico's, and literally the woman said, "Oh my gosh, look at this store, honey, we've got to go in here." And they did a detour and walked right in, so I mean, they do get the benefit from the foot traffic that's coming to the restaurant. So that's it, that's my report, any questions?
Terrific, thank you. There being that we can move to 11C, External Relations, just a couple things, I am attending the US Conference of Mayors meeting later this month in Washington, as is my practice, I do not charge the village for travel or hotel or any of the expenses, the village does pay my conference fee, but it doesn't pay my travel expenses. I had a call, Sharon and I had a call with our IT person about network and device security for the village, it certainly will inform our work on the digitization project, but again, Thrice and I work for a company where we've learned a lot about this, and so I'm looking to leverage some of that experience to our benefit. I think what startled me the most is how vulnerable local governments are deemed on this, I've got a real presentation on this that I'll provide the Board, because I'm working on this, you know, at another venue, but it's frightening, I didn't think that hostile actors and hostile powers overseas would be interested in a small town, they are, they are. And what really sobered me up is I heard it from the former head of US Counterintelligence, so it was really sobering. And then on the lighter side, a month ago, we had the local Cub Scout troop across the hall, and it's easy to get discouraged these days, this was inspirational, they're all fifth-grade boys, they knew more about government and how it should be than about 88% of the adults I know. I showed a picture, because I just said, "Here's how our system developed," and I put a picture of King George III up, these boys knew who he was! I said, "I'd like to do a little poll of my board tonight and see if they know who this picture is." It was really wonderful, they asked great questions, a couple of very devoted dads were part of the program, and we served them pizza and cookies, and we ate the pizza and cookies, and they asked the questions. So that's my report tonight. 11D, Finance, HR and Administration, Trustee Hayes.
Yeah, just a pitch for all of us as individuals, and anybody who's watching the video later, in fact, yeah, we're looking for a new accountant for the village, and the position's out there, Sharon Peterson is the point of contact, but if you know anybody who's accountant, we're looking for someone two to five years of experience that can come in, and they're gonna learn from one of the masters we have, Peggy.
That's right.
But we're looking to fill this position, the 12th is the current closing date, so I've got, I want to say that publicly, so if you know anybody, we'd love for you to refer them, and think about, you know, your day jobs, too, I'm thinking about myself, what we can do there. The other thing, we, treasurer position is planning to be posted, so that's coming out there as well, that'd be a part-time, so that'll be coming out in and around the 12th. As far as the rest is concerned, we updated the policy manual last month, voted on that. I'm gonna start this idea of looking at the PTO this spring, as we talked in that meeting, and see where that may end up, and we'll probably, in the middle of summer, be able to have some discussion on that, and look forward to that, and that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Questions for Trustee Hayes? If not, Roads and Infrastructure, Trustee Schelmoser.
Thank you, President Richardson. A couple weeks ago, Sharon Peterson and I, we went around the village to look at the various quality of the roads, HR Green gave us some proposals, so we're going to be looking at the following subdivisions in fiscal year 2025, we'll be doing the south half of Harbor Estates, about 1.29 miles, Wedgwood will be the next enclave in fiscal year 2026, just under a half a mile, and then Heritage Estates, about a half a mile in fiscal year 2027, and finally Lakeland Estates, 1.7 miles, that'll probably be one of the largest projects that we have. We've elected to do it, you know, continue the old-fashioned way of viewing roads, instead of a more expensive regimented way, I think it's the most cost-effective, and we can really see what areas need improvement. So that's my report today.
Thank you. Questions for Trustee Schelmoser?
I have a question. As far as the deterioration of these neighborhoods, do you have enough history of knowing, like, when these roads were last done, and what kind of lifespan we're seeing on these roads, and are they falling out about by age, or are some aging faster than others?
Some are aging faster than others. I had given Trustee Schelmoser a map that actually indicates when the subdivisions were repaved, so there could be one, I'm gonna make up the year, it could have been done in 2008, and let's say it was slated for 2023, but as it turns out, it was just fine, so it didn't get
Right.
resurfaced last year, versus something that was projected to be further out, because it had been paved later, has deteriorated worse. Like, I know Wedgwood, that's the one that, it was, I know Peter does have that sheet that kind of says when they were paved last.
That's what even made me, because I live right across the street from them, I remember when that was done.
2007.
2007.
Wedgwood, right. And that may have been the one where we looked at it, and one didn't really look, there was one area that it was scheduled, but it did not look as bad as some of the other sections.
Right, we drove pretty far out north by Anderson Road, and those were scheduled, I think, in the next couple of years, but they weren't that, they didn't seem to be that bad. So that's why I at least want to work with whichever engineering firm we are working with on that every year, and drive them every year, just because, as you said, Trustee Burke, they deteriorate differently.
Well, I ask it for a couple of reasons, it's the way my brain works, one is, you know, if we really wanted to do One is, you know, if we really wanted to do the work and say, take a look at Wedgewood, for example, and look at its lifespan, and ask the question, "Why might that be deteriorating faster than others?" You might go all the way back and look at who the contractor was, and is there a theme? Like, you know, is one contractor's roads not lasting as long as another's? Just saying, there could be some information if you dug into that a little bit, that history. I know we're also moving to the, I think we're staying on the Reclamite program-
Yes.
-where we're spraying the roads now.
Yes.
And so it'll just be interesting if we used to consider the actual lifespan of a neighborhood road to be fifteen years, are we going to start seeing eighteen or twenty? You know, how-
Right.
We'll start to see, because we've had that program going for a number of years now, and it'll be interesting to see how the newer roads that we've been using the Reclamite on are faring. So there's some good data there. I mean, I know you're a finance wizard, but, you know, and this roads and infrastructure thing is exciting and new to you, but there is a treasure trove of stuff in there that if you wanted to dig into it, it's pretty fun, because I think, and we've also talked about being able to predict the future a little bit better and understand the real budgeting for this process, too, right? Instead of sort of saying, "Oh, gosh, we get angry neighbors calling because there's too many potholes," it's like, can we really begin to have a plan, both by controlling who's doing our roads, how we're maintaining them, and how often we're doing that, that we could really have a very reliable budget? I know it's not quite that clean, but a pretty good projection of our road needs going forward, so. Very good, thank you.
Sure. And on that point about a plan, we met with one of the residents who had some concern about the notification and the timing. According to the resident, there wasn't enough lead time, and they couldn't get out of their driveway, so very similar to the good project we had with the trash bin replacement, over-communicate. I think we sent five or six notifications, I don't know what the right number is, maybe one or two notifications in each subdivision, plenty of time ahead of that. I think that would, you know, alleviate it, and I think that'd be appreciated. So that's something else that I want to take a look at with you.
One other comment to your comment. If you get the data, who's supplying the actual asphalt? There's asphalt plants all the contractors that go to. That, I would tell you, is another key differentiator in the quality of the asphalt that comes out of the plant. It's like cement, not all cement manufacturers are the same. So if you have that data, that would be another interesting correlation, so.
Sure.
Yes, well, I think we started doing aprons, a different approach to aprons in some of the subdivisions, to see how that has affected the longevity of the project.
And interestingly enough, Wedgewood Trails was the very first one we did where we eliminated gravel shoulders and changed the apron. That's why it sticks in my head, because I was really jealous of their roads when they got theirs done, and we were all jealous of their roads when they got it done with the racing stripes down the side and all that.
Yeah.
So that's, since I've lived here, which is, you know, two thousand, but we wouldn't expect it to last, you know, twenty-four years, but I do recall they were the new standard. So it's another interesting point, whether that has helped or not.
It's probably the issue we get the most calls on, potholes-
Right.
...and the, and snow removal.
Right.
Further questions for trustee Schelmoser? If not, eleven F, public safety, trustee Schaller.
Thank you, President Richardson. Well, I ask Lieutenant Kirk to come front and center. While other communities, obviously in Lake County and in the Chicago area, have been urged to pass resolutions regarding immigration, I know Factor of the Grove had one incident, and I think there's some other municipalities in Lake County that have been put in a position of having to deal with surprise drop-offs. I know that we've done some investigating there, but fortunately, we don't have a train station, so I don't know. Have there been any more, most recent, and what is, what would be a plan of action should anything happen, let's say with Camden?
Yeah, there's been some other, some other drop-offs within Lake County. If it were to happen, obviously, we would respond. The deputies in the area would respond, command would respond. We would make our notifications to Lake County Emergency Management. They already have a stockpile of supplies and resources available. At that point, we would notify the landing zone in Chicago and work on transportation to get those people, asylum seekers, out to the landing zone in Chicago. So it's not something that I feel that we aren't equipped to handle. If there, if a bus showed up at the village hall tomorrow, then we would show up and we would do what we have to do.
Appreciate that.
I don't feel that there would be any extraordinary issues that we wouldn't be able to handle.
It's unfortunate these people are dropped off and told them in Chicago, and they're thirty-five, forty miles away. There was an incident in the area that happened, I think, last week, in Val Good Shepherd, and the village has recognized the K-9 unit for Lake County, and again, the K-9 unit has come front and center.
Yes, we, I will always compliment our K-9 unit. They're very well-trained and, once again, did very good work. Five-thirty a.m. on New Year's Eve, there was a aggravated domestic battery suspect from Island Lake jurisdiction who was receiving treatment prior to being transported to Lake County Jail. He fled the hospital on foot. We were notified. Deputy Forlenza and his K-9 Dax responded, immediately began tracking. While he was tracking, they received a call of an alarm at one of the doctor's offices near the hospital. Dog tracked right to that building. There was an open door. They made an announcement. The suspect refused to surrender, and Deputy Forlenza sent Dax in, and Dax subsequently bit the suspect in the leg. We ended up taking him into custody.
Job well done, but again, incidents in our area with the Lake County Sheriff's Department, obviously, that individual could very easily have gone into the industrial area or somewhere near there, so it's, again, our gratitude for, and what's happening, and we've had the K-9 unit here, we're at the barn stump, so they've become our friends, definitely.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, but if you don't like it, he'll bite you. To watch your dog, yeah.
No, thank you.
Other than that, things are under control?
Yes, yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
To the entire department.
You're welcome.
Thank you. La Canda Fire Department Chief Patrick Kane just extends his good wishes to the entire board and to the village. Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, interesting, since they've gone in-house with their department, they've had no resignations, whereas in the past, they've lost a lot of individuals when they were contracting out with PSI, but now that they've brought it inside, the members of the department seem a lot happier, a lot more content, and we had a couple of them, as a matter of fact, help out with our gift, thanks-gifting endeavor to the village of Lake Barrington. Sixteen drop-offs, a couple of weeks ago on a Saturday, concluded, thanks to Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District for having a Hummer over at the Kelsey Roadhouse. We loaded up the Hummer, we loaded up a couple of other vehicles, and the department and myself, we took all of that over to the Cuba Food Pantry, Cuba Township Food Pantry, they were extremely grateful, got a tour through the department, through the pantry downstairs, and so first annually, it'll be repeated, and we've had the cooperation and the pledge of the department to likewise be involved in it. And I think one of the interesting parts, I mentioned it, we talk about economic development, Kelsey Roadhouse really did an outstanding job in, when we had our final collection, and we had Santa Claus, and he was downstairs in the, when they finally reopened, but everyone remembers of the Kelsey Roadhouse, the place was packed. It was really a fun atmosphere, they did a great job, so it's good for economic development, but it was obviously good we collected an awful lot down there at that time. So my thanks to all that were involved and all that contributed to the first thanks-gifting effort here in the village of Lake Barrington. And finally, we talk about Cub Scouts. I was part of, for the second year in a row, the Barrington Area Council and Government have asked village personnel to participate in a middle school government affairs exercise, and I went down to middle school in Barrington. Instead of this year, addressing them, they had tabletops, they had maybe groups of three or four. Each one of them at the table would come up with something that they want to change, and where do I go about contacting the right person to make that change? And it was extremely interesting. I think I sat with about four or five different tables. It was a great activity, and I was very impressed, as was our village president, the Cub Scouts, these young people newly on top of things, and it was interesting. A lot of it had to do with some school activity, backpack, I can't take a backpack to class anymore because there's some problems, and one of them, what do I do about gun control in the schools? So it was some interesting topics. So I feel, I'm happy that I participated, and I think Baycock had a nice program with regards to that. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Schaller? Trustee Perkins is absent this evening, so unless the administrator has something to offer on her behalf?
I do have one item. Trustee Perkins and I are going to be meeting on January sixteenth to talk about our 2024 special events, and I will have our newly-appointed village clerk, executive assistant, involved with that as well.
Terrific, well, thank you. Agenda item twelve, there is no old business. Thirteen, no ordinances. Fourteen, no resolutions. Fifteen, no new business. Agenda item sixteen, second opportunity in the agenda for the public to address the board, no one seeking recognition. We are gonna continue our closed session from before, so I will ask the board members to remain here when we adjourn. There being no further business other than closed session, we will adjourn the public meeting first or after we go?
We adjourn it after the closed session. So we need a motion to go into closed-
Good enough.
-for personnel matters, I believe.
At this point, Chair would like to, like a motion that a portion, that a portion of the meeting be closed effective immediately to the public for purposes of discussing matters of personnel. May I have that motion, please? Trustee Schaller, may I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Burke, thank you both. And I'll ask the administrator, call the roll.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Hayes?
Yes.
Trustee Schelmoser?
Yes.
Trustee Van Ryan?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, and why don't we take a five-minute break in between, and then we'll come back and go into closed session.